Okay. It is six o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order right now. It doesn't look like we have a lot of outsiders in the queue. I don't know. Do we have anybody else?
Yes, yes, you have, you could do a roll call so they could pop up, but you do have Chris Epley, Brian Nichols, Chris Einmo online. Also online, you have Ken Woodward, Danny Nielsen.
A lot of Marion County folks and Detroit folks too. All right, very good. Welcome, everybody. I'm gonna start off tonight's meeting with a roll call of board members. So Danny, would you do the roll call, please?
Do I do an introduction of the roll call?
Well, sure, we can.
Okay, Mr. Woodward.
Who? Yeah, I'm here.
No, could you do a quick introduction of yourself, sir?
Ken Woodward, Representative for Detroit, Vice Chair. Welcome aboard.
Mr. Nielsen?
Present.
Want to do a quick introduction, please?
We have a new board member.
You're very muffled.
Do you want to do a quick introduction for our new member?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm Danny Nielsen and I'm with the City Council in Detroit as well as the NSA.
Mr. Kirsch?
Tim Kirsch, President, Mill City Mayor, Board Chair, NSA.
Mr. Evans?
Ron Evans, Treasurer of NSA and the Council Member, City Gates.
Ms. Schofield?
Emily Schofield. I am on the City Council with the City of Gates and I'm not sure yet what my role is with the NSA other than I'm here to help support it.
A representative of the City of Gates. We have four communities on board. Each community has two representatives. Currently, Idana only has one, as they're looking for a replacement representative also. So each board member, each city has same voting power in the whole sewer authority realm, the way it was all designed.
And we met when you came in. I'm Janet Zian Hall. I'm on Mill City City Council. I am the Secretary for this. And Mr. Moreno is out, absent. You want the introductions, everybody?
Might as well. Go ahead and I'd like to have everybody introduce themselves to our new, our new representative from the City of Gates and that's gonna be Emily Schofield here. So Scott, if you would.
Scott Danson, Detective Director of Millland Valley Council Government.
Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Huntering. I'm the Project Manager. I think we met Thursday.
We did. Yeah. Brian?
I'm Brian Nichols. I'm the Marion County Public Works Director and shepherding this effort on behalf of the county.
Chris Einmo, I'm the Project Manager for Marion County Public Works.
I'm Chris Epley. I'm the Community Services Department Director. Just listening in.
Perfect. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. For the board, I would like to ask anybody that has any potential conflicts of interest that they might recognize at this time to state so for the record. And if there's nothing at this time, but something comes up later in the meeting that could be considered a conflict of interest, please speak up then and let us get that on record. Announcements, does anybody have any announcements that they would like to make? No announcements in particular. Then we'll move on to public comments and questions. Pretty light on public participation today. So we don't have to worry about that. So we're gonna scoot right on into our work session and we had with us the discussion of operational plan. So now we've had a few different, I won't say versions and revisions and stuff like that of our operational plan. And I read through it a couple of times while I was on a road trip recently and Ron had a couple of good points that he brought up in that. But I think I'm gonna ask Ron to explain a little bit of what you're thinking and we need to come up with a, how should we say it, the, the way we want to present the operational plan. Now, I know that Marion County is also has some things and we want to make sure that we work together and everybody's on the same page. We just want to make sure that we have documentation that this is all gonna be affordable to us and that we're all able to work together in this timeline and that we're, we have to meet. So discussions on the operational plan, I guess. Ron, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Very first thing, it turns out that we have generated a conflict because Marion County or the Mill City, the new, the new plant is a very specific operational plan requirement to their permits, so they can't have two operational plans. So we decided to rename ours to the NSA Strategic Plan.
Strategic Plan. Words matter.
The recent emphasis we've been placing on is on the idea of forming an operational plan for the NSA so that we can get an organization in place that can, that can receive, receive assets. The general emphasis on that right now is for the, to get the, the legal team on board to analyze the four city project pollution. And there's been a thought along the lines of, in addition to that, we tasked them with first actually coming up with a simplified intergovernment agreement plan that would get something in place until the final plan gets there. And if we could have the legal team do both of that, they could structure a simplified IGA that could be morphed into a full, a full four city plan. And the one risk that I personally think is, is involved in this is if we, if we develop the four city plans over time and then we present it to the four cities, for whatever reason at all, they don't adopt it, we would actually be right back where we are right now. Well, if we first did a simplified, got it in place, we could go to the people, say, now we do have a plan, a structured plan in place. We can receive funds. We can now aggressively go after the remaining funds for Phase One and Phase Two funds. Saying we have a structure in place to receive things, so adding some questioning. So there's a benefit, I think, from that and just in the fact showing Marion County and, and the people that they line that we are actually doing something, we're doing concrete steps. I think there's a value to doing a very quick IGA with Mill City and NSA as Mill City being the operator, owner-operator of Phase One particularly. And that's something we can discuss and what, what your feelings are on that. To get the other part of that, we could, right now, the legal team funding is tied up with Marion County having to, having to approve funding and get it through to the, to the call. We could guarantee that with our funds. Because according to Chris, it has been approved by Marion County as a structure probably getting it through. So if we use our funds to, to guarantee payment, we could get the legal team started immediately. And if the funds were available before they invoice for their services, then it would be available. If not, we can pay it and then they would reimburse us later down the road. But that would get the legal team started now. And so anyway, that, that's kind of the questions that are forward right now. We need discussion on and come to some kind of agreement on that thing.
I agree with you a lot about the, we do need to get the attorneys involved and stuff like that when it comes to our IGAs and, and things like that. I see personally the, the cogs and the wheels, the wheels are still turning and we don't have, I think, a definite what the operational plan is completely yet. I don't know. I still see some things being hashed out. I know that Marion County is working diligently on, on all those aspects, but we don't even have the, the approved treatment plan or anything yet. So until we have those things in place, I don't know, is it possible even to have our operational plan? Completely, our strategic plan, that's right. So the operational plan is still in the, the Marion County Court and it's a strategic plan for us at this time.
Yes, and what we're doing is, we're trying to get an idea when, when it is completed or through the call or whatever, they have an actual operation or a plan for us moving forward, we will have an idea how to, how to address it. If instead it's wait until it comes and then start looking at it, we can look at, we know what the general shape of it would be. And we can, we can get ready for that and get ahead of the game, I think. But then again, that's, that's up for discussion.
So bigger discussion, Ken, Danny, did you have anything you wanted to add to that or?
Well, now this is, this is Ken. I don't know what Marion County is gonna require or.
Or DEQ is gonna require of Marion County or all the above, yeah.
Yeah, for a set contract. So I think that if we agree or consensus or whatever, that maybe COG should sit down with Marion County and DEQ and ask that questions, what is going to be required? Or in a contract to receive the facility or whatever. Maybe that's our next step, but I appreciate what Ron has drafted. It's.
Amazing, Warren.
There's a lot of.
That's, that's an understatement. It's great work and so, but we don't know what Marion County or DEQ is gonna require.
Well, I'll go ahead and so that folk, I don't mind if I jump in.
Yeah, no, feel free.
Yeah. Okay, keep in mind that the, the requirement for NISA to produce, you know, a, a operational plan or a, or a strategic plan. That's something that I asked Danielle Gonzalez to insert into the funding agreement just to make sure that it was being discussed and this group was making progress and then that progress was reflected in conversations with each of the city councils so that a year, a year and a half from now or a year from now, I'm not like still sitting there, but I'm launching the construction of a plant without any groundwork laid. So what I'll say is when it comes to the strategic plan, Marion County is going to be very flexible and understanding. It's all about getting to the finish line and bringing all this together at the right time. So, so I don't want, I don't want this board to, to worry that Marion County is gonna pull the rug out from under the work that you guys are doing. That's not, not the intent. Just the fact that, that we are starting to tackle those decisions on who makes sense to operate the thing, who makes sense to, to own this thing and then what's, what's the plan of attack gonna be for Detroit and Idana? That in a nutshell is gonna satisfy Marion County for the time being. But we do need to, we do need to finish those conversations in terms of deciding just fundamentally who, who makes sense to own and operate the Mill City Plant in particular. And then there's a bunch of other little decisions that go on, but that. Will, will Gates actually consent to construction of this collection system in their city? And then if so, are they willing to, you know, what, what kind of actions are they willing to take? You know, in terms of ordinances and those kinds of things. Will connection be mandatory or will it be voluntary? Those kinds of things. And, and if it is mandatory, under what circumstances will it be mandatory? Those kind of, those are some of the more sticky questions, I think, than the strategic plan here because it all impacts the financial feasibility of operating the, the system once it's built. So I don't want, I don't want this group to get too caught up in worrying about the county putting on like extra demands or anything like that. Just the fact that we're making progress on this is the whole reason why that requirement is listed in the funding agreement.
Um, the other thing that I'd like to address is we have an extension, my understanding. Laura, is that correct? Or, or Brian, I'll dress it to you. Is that correct? We have an extension to address this legal issue?
Well, you've got a verbal commitment of an additional $80,000 in funding. You've got a balance that's unspent on your existing funding agreement. Chris Epley's department is actually managing that agreement. So I think we should turn to Chris, Chris and get the latest from him.
We have two, we have two emails from Chris that I forwarded to the board. One with the extension of the strategic plan timeline and the other with the initial expected funding. So that's not just verbal, it's an email.
I would just like to, I like to keep the remaining funds that we have if Marion County has come up with some extra funds. Oh, there's Chris. Go ahead.
So Mr. Chair and Committee Members, I've been having some discussions with Jan and with the board. As Brian mentioned, they have given verbal commitment to the 80,000 for legal services and then the 196 for continued COG staffing until, until the football is turned over to whoever's gonna carry it across the end zone there. The piece that they have not committed to is funding the staffing and O and M for commissioning. But I think that that's a discussion that we can have later on as we get closer to commissioning. I will be meeting with the board in the first week of November. So I don't, I'm not sure if that's actually later this week or early next week to secure where that funding exactly is coming from. And then once we have it all in place, then I'll start processing an amendment to our contract or IGA with NISA. And when we open up that IGA, I'm also gonna do some work on the language in relation to the deliverables so that they more closely reflect, as Brian was talking about, just the desire for us to have continual progress forward as opposed to hard deliverables at hard dates. Cause we recognize this project is, it's complicated, it's long and is gonna be, you know, technically challenging and hitting very specific dates with very specific pieces of it. May be difficult, especially if they're written in a contract that's difficult to, to modify as we go forward. So I'm just gonna soften up that language before I give you that contract to look at. So, any other questions?
I would like to probably say, bounce off of what Brian was talking earlier about, you know, the operations and stuff like that, although Mill City is aware that it is a potential owner, a potential operator, a potential builder, whatever. But we have not had a big discussion on it at council level and I cannot obligate the, the city myself, just as a representative, and that's a discussion too. So when it comes time for the operational plan or even the strategic plan, we need to be able to have the elements that Mill City would be want to obligate itself to or, or potentially obligate itself to. And, and those still are things that we have to work out yet. So we can't, I would say vote on a plan that says, this is the way it's gonna be and Mill City will do this and that because, until obviously the city gets to agree on it as well. So as well as City Gates too. And in their participation in the collection system up there. So we still got a lot of discussions there to go on to know the way the, the plant down here is gonna operate and, and the way that Mill City can be involved and work it with partnership with the NISA as well as with Marion County. So we've got a lot of ongoing negotiations. Once we figure out what we're gonna build. So, and what it's gonna take. So that's where I'm at with that.
So we have time.
We still have time, it sounds like. This will be like planning for everything else. We can plan and plan and plan, but it's gonna boil right down to a last minute detail where we all gotta make strong, well-informed decisions. The more we talk about it leading up to there means we've thought about everything thoroughly in the beginning and have given a lot of consideration to all the different aspects. So nothing jumps out at us. It's new. So I think talking about it every opportunity we get for strategic planning, operational plans, things like that, gives us a broader understanding when it does come time to put it all into ink.
So maybe, maybe we can just decide our next meeting where we can make a decision that COG will sit down with Brian, Chris, both Chris, Epley and Emo. And, and they can kind of hash out what's needed in a contract or.
But I still think even with that, things will still morph and change a little bit from time to time. I mean, like I said, we still don't have approval of a, a final, a final concept or whatever, what the actual plan is gonna be or resting place for it and things like that. So I see still a lot of moving parts yet that aren't gonna, that we're gonna have to nail down. But yes, I would encourage Marion County to have good conversations with our, our COG staff here to help get a good accurate information to the board so we can help make some decisions. Scott, you have some to add?
Well, I, I, I think this is an excellent discussion. I, I see this, what's happening right now and thank you to Marion County and thank you to the hard worker Ron and everyone around the table. We're gonna split operation and strategic for a little bit. That operation plan is really very tied to the engineering and to all those pieces and how all of that stuff works. So we'll track that along with the county who's tracking along with Keller and, and all the groups working that, that side up there. On, on the other side is where you guys are gonna start getting your hands more into the, into the system here. And that is when we can, and get, we have a clear understanding that we can get the, your attorneys on board who can then start to structure the agreements. And that's really the obligations of all the parties. And that's as important to the county as it is to each of your individual jurisdictions and to NISA as a whole. So that's really the other side. And that's gonna be the part that really will start tearing up and you folks will dive into. Think about it. Ownership, connectivity, obligations within it, how things are done. Those are big, hefty discussions. However, I do think with the right people at the table to assist you folks, I think you can have a good honest conversation about how to go and then we can chunk that and how you can take it now back to your jurisdictions and how we can help explain all the bits and parts about how they work, how they can see the whole, how they see their part in it and talk about the alternatives. That's really where we're at right now. That is a moving thing that moves in simultaneously as they're dealing with the specifics of engineering and operations and cost structures of O and M and things like that. Then they'll come back together again. And then, then those agreements will marry back up. So it's not that you won't be in the middle of it. It's just they'll be over here and, and working that operational side while you guys are working the structural and legal and ownership and management and, you know, those things that sit over there and deal with it. So I think this is a really great opportunity and thank you again to everybody around the table and to the county and to your other partners in the Upper Basin for being at the table. So everybody's working together. Laura, did I miss anything?
Uh, no. And I, I think, does Danny have something to say? I saw him lean forward and then I go Ron.
And I know Ron does too.
I, I just went real quick, just the operational plan now that Marion County is just for the plan, period.
Yeah, yeah.
That's their, their plan is for the plan.
Yeah.
The rest of the facilities are strategic.
Yep. I would agree with that clarification.
Would it, would it be beneficial at all once we get the attorneys on board? If they could come up with a list of decision items that we need to take?
Yeah, like a to-do list, a to-do list to go through it. Yeah.
So we could go back to our boards and say, okay, here's what we need to discuss going forward and then.
Um, and I, I can update you on that. You have completed interim procurement, which means that you had to get three informal quotes from three law firms. And as you know, LGLG declined the big picture. And then another attorney firm also declined it. So then that leaves Cable Houston. So you are now able to select Cable Houston once the county's amended contract comes through with the funding. And when we, Scott and I met with Cable Houston back in August, one of the things those attorneys said, and they're very experienced with this, is we will come to your meeting with an issues list. These are the types of issues that entities like that have to make decisions about. And, you know, part of it was rate setting. Who's gonna be in charge of rate setting? Ownership, financing, employment. So they had sort of a list of things that entities like this have to start making governance decisions that entities like this have to start making decisions about. So you're aligned in, in thinking of the attorneys that are yet to be hired. That's good.
So we'll, we'll work, we'll begin to work those two sides with you folks, but expect a date to bring back to this board. Especially getting ready on the strategic plan side to have those experts and those agreements to come back to the table. And, and the county will be there too. I mean, the county is well aware, Brian, I hope I'm not over emphasizing this, but definitely the county understands its current role as the owner of, of grant funds to do a project bidding and procurement on the capital side. So it understands its role in this too. So.
Danny, you got your hand up?
Appreciate the discussion and I mostly, I appreciate Ron's terrific work to get us focused on these issues and the clarity from Brian and Chris. The question I have at this point, because I think the way things are moving and the fact that the money we currently have has to be spent by '26, I believe, that the Upper Canyon or Project B or whatever you want to call it still is in limbo in terms of whether or not we're even gonna have a permanent sewer system. So the question for me becomes how involved other than as voyeurs should we be in the Upper Canyon for what's going on now? Because what's going on now really is relevant only to Mill City and Gates. And it, it doesn't matter what sort of an operation plan you put together. It has to address the Mill City and Gates operation and maintenance, period. Until we finish our testing and further discussions about what's appropriate in terms of our residential versus our commercial district. I certainly want to stay involved. I know Ken does and I'm sure Tony does as well. But I think we can offer our thoughts on what's going on, but until we have decisions about our home ground, I'm not sure how relevant our activities are going to be until that is decided.
Excellent, excellent observation and comments, I appreciate that, Danny, now I've heard. And in speaking with other board members stuff, they're almost. Two sewer authorities or something like that, but I would think that. Uh, uh, it's just coming to me, I'm kinda think and talk out loud at the same time, uh. Possibly still one sewer authority, but basically two committees on the the authority. Upper Canyon and and the Lower Canyon, I don't know. Uh, I want you guys to be involved in everything we do, obviously, and I think it would be cost prohibitive to have two separate. Sewer authorities, so I would think we could still act as one board. Everybody stay involved as much as they could, I want to be involved to. Help assure the Upper Canyon that I am with you on getting what development you need done up there and and not. Uh, disengage from anything up there because early on I wanted to say that I'm committed. To seeing that you have what it takes for Detroit to survive and for uh, Idana to grow and prosper up there as well. Because that's where it's actually came to, uh, came from was the the idea of putting in the sewer system. In the Upper Canyon first, Mill City got involved uh, because we were invited in because. Needed our population numbers to begin with, but all that stuff has changed. Uh, over the years because of circumstance, wildfires, COVID, all that other stuff. So, uh, now Mill City was in the position where it needed to expand because we're at capacity. And other issues, uh, maintenance issues that we had had. And I don't want it to seem like Mill City's just taking over and running away with all the money and all the funding and all the sewer. And leaving everybody else out of the picture, so we wanna stay involved with you guys as well. Uh, and and make sure that the whole canyon. Survives all this because uh, we're stronger as one unit than we are as four separate units, that's for sure.
Absolutely, and thank you Mayor Kirsch, I appreciate that, um. Nobody's gonna think that you're running away with all the money, I mean, you've already have all the money, other than a few million dollars that we have for residential and. And commercial assistance in Detroit and nothing for Idana, quite frankly, um. But it's a great discussion, I heard this concept offered up probably a year ago that perhaps we should have two. Um, NSA groups. And uh, whether we do or not, I think the important thing is that all of us in the Upper Canyon would like to learn from what's happening now. So that if we're blessed and have the opportunity for a permanent system in the Upper Canyon. Uh, we'll have that knowledge on board and then we can continue to work with the Lower Canyon in terms of lessons learned and and uh. Uh, the understanding of of the operations and maintenance issues, um. Which will be important i- if if that actually bears fruit, um. There was another thought, but my old brain just dumped it, sorry.
So Janet first?
Um, I I appreciate that, Danny, I really do, but I think that. We all need to stick to the group so we can make sure that we follow through and get everything we need up the canyon. I don't think of us as separate communities, I haven't for a long time, and I think we really do need to stick together. Um, and listen to each other, we know that we're in it for the long haul, that's my personal opinion, I I really. I really feel that way, so I just wanted to express that, you know, we, I'd like to see us stick together.
Yeah, I like, another to carry on that thing, the NSA as a group, we should stay together, the four cities. For as long as we possibly can, the the question becomes when we start to get set up a separate authority. To assume ownership of of Bill City Gates, that would actually be separate from the IGA or under IGA, but it would. It wouldn't require your involvement, that group would be operating it more or less, I would think, myself, I have been in parallel with the NSA. We would continue to focus on what we can do for Detroit Idana as well as down here. While the group set up to assume the ownership focuses on getting the city and gates on the boat.
If I can offer just a technical point that, um, I I've heard multiple board members uh, ex. Phrase something and and I think it was Scott and Icefall, that when we talk about setting up the joint venture. Your existing structure is the joint venture. So you already have that piece in place, I know Ron knows this because he and I talked about this earlier. I think the part that we that we just need to explain better and the attorneys will come explain it better. Is that now what you need is an agreement between the NSA. And whoever's going to operate. Your lower basin facility. And whoever's going to own, uh, if NSA doesn't own it, the lower basin facility. So, I I just wanna say like you, you can keep the NSA as the entity. You can keep the NSA as the entity that owns everything, you can keep the NSA as the entity that employs all the people. That operates everything. Or, and this was in Ron's report and and Gordon's, you can, there are some other choices and that's where the attorney's gonna help, but. You have the starting block, okay, you have NSA, you have that entity, you have your joint venture. It's just that you don't have all the other agreements underneath yet, um, or maybe. That that tie it together about who's gonna own it, who's gonna operate it, who's gonna employ the people. So so the hard, frankly, one of the hardest pieces you you have, you have that foundation. Just you need some, a a detail, so you don't have to create, you don't have to create another entity. Um, you've got what you, the entity that can do it.
It just requires more detailed agreements and operational plans than IGA.
And and that was our fault, when I realized when we explained our our structure discussion back in September. When we talked about the joint venture, we didn't clarify, you you've got it, it's most of it, you just have to do these other details.
And the devil is in those details, and so that's where your time is gonna be spent in the strategic plan. Danny, I think your question is actually an excellent question, straight off the bat for the attorneys, now. One of the reasons we, when you instructed us to go out and talk to folks who are experienced in this world, we were looking for groups. That worked with authorities. Worked with districts, which are are really the same thing. Uh, although there are some differences. Uh, who worked with one nineties like you folks are and and then worked with. Agreements that pull everyone, a one ninety together as a joint. Uh, entity where you have agreements that twist and tie folks together in different in 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 different forms. And so one of the questions we were asking them is, is this thing as simple as pie? And they said, no, it's, it is more complicated than that. So, actually, I think Danny's question is a challenging question to them. Help us understand structurally how this stuff can work. Help us understand who's on the, it it's really three basic questions, who's on the hook? Right? Who's obligated within the four corners of the contract? You know, and that's, that's the real art of it, who's obligated, who's on the hook within the four corners of the agreement? Then the second piece is, how are those assets and liabilities then dealt with? And then how do you deal with the pieces that are missing, Danny, because it's clear that there's a piece missing right now, so. Team, you asked Danny's question back to these attorney, how does that work? Have you seen it where a group has stayed together and hadn't had all its parts together yet, how's that work? Let them kind of help you un- help you understand through way of example and how they've done those agreements, so I I really think this is the right place to be. That's exactly the right question, because that informs lots of things right now. How you're structuring it, how you're setting it up, yeah, are you a management company or are you a? A whole, uh, you know, a holding corporation, i- i- you know, there's lots of terms of art that are used in all of these things. That tie these things together, that's why we really suggest this, so I really think. Danny, to to say this out loud, you can answer your question. Whether it's exactly what everybody wants to hear or not, or whether it's what the group agrees to, tha- 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 that's the debate you have. And the discussion that you have, tha- that forms those agreements, so, um. What I hear you folks saying is, let's keep the team together, let's get these folks in, ask that big question. Understand how all these things are put together.
Well put, I just wanted to. Express for myself, something like Janet and Ron do, uh, solidarity, we we wanna remain. Solid that that we are, we're gonna be in your corner as well when it comes to developing the Upper Canyon. One more thing I wanted to say on the discussion of operational plan, so that our Marion County friends can hear it. I have one, one word, and that is affordable. Uh, we're not gonna be able to afford hundred and fifty dollar water sewer bills in Mill City and Gates, Detroit and Idana. Detroit is already looking at about ninety bucks a month for just water. And that's, that's what the Salem pays for water, sewers, streets, parks, everything all at once. So, uh, we're not gonna be able to uh, impress upon the the. The incomes and the, I wanna say there are a lot of lower incomes in in our corner of the world up here than there are in the city of Salem. So they get great water at our expense, so it has to be affordable if it's gonna work up here, so. Keep that in mind for operation plans, thank you. Danny? Danny, you're on.
Yeah, thank you and and thank you, uh, Mayor Kirsch for bringing up the, that issue of affordability. I think that the other elephant in the room has to do with what Gordon has shared with us over the last couple of months regarding. Affordability, at least in the Upper Canyon, and the fact that there was consideration given to the fact that. Mill City and Gates might somehow merge. You know, their services with the Upper Canyon, which would essentially mean that that the Lower Canyon would be subsidizing the Upper Canyon. Now, I will tell you, if I lived in the Lower Canyon and somebody suggested that, I would vigorously bridle. At at supporting Detroit and Idana from Mill City and Gates, there's gotta be a different way, and I think. I guess my point of all this is that if we've got two, three, five, seven years. To think about this, technology is going to evolve, our our our. Uh, lessons learned will create evolvement in our own thinking, and I think we all need to get in our separate little grooves. And move forward while we stay together, uh, learning from one another, and and let's just see how it works out. But, I don't think you'll ever get. An enthusiastic support from the Lower Canyon to subsidize the Upper Canyon.
That's kinda like the folks at Salem don't want to put on a, a fee on their bill to pay for their uh, watershed. Uh, but I I understand, Brian, you have your hand up there.
Yeah, I just, uh, uh, two things I wanted to jump in on, one, um, so something to keep in mind with Detroit Idana, that's a big plus, well. A a little bit of a step back, if the money that we had received had a longer time associated with it. It would have opened up some other uh, options to consider, um, uh, but those options take time to develop and then get through permitting and all that kinda stuff, since we needed. Uh, ironclad, yep, we we know something, we had enough money to do something for Mill City Gates, but that's a discussion for last year. Um, when it comes to Detroit Idana, what we, the current effort is going to do is. Uh, proof out the viability of some disposal sites, and that's always been the biggest, um, the biggest unknown. Uh, from a permitting perspective for Detroit Idana, so at least in this current effort. We should make progress there and then that will become a known, what will, what's the permit ability of of a couple of different disposal sites, so. That'll, that'll be helpful there. Um, I do wanna take a step back and just ask Laura, there was something said uh, several minutes ago, and I wanna check with Laura. Uh, or actually, maybe it's a Chris Epley question, um. Do, does cog have to wait for this uh, funding agreement amendment before they can engage? Um, or for before uh, uh, NISSA can engage, um. Uh, who who's our legal firm, the, Cable Houston? Or is that something that they can move on now, because if we're waiting, we may have a few more weeks of waiting before we can make that happen, right?
Okay, but what we could do is prep a supplemental budget so that it would redefine a scope. Uh, for them. So legally, you guys would be directing us to do that, so you're directing your funds to go towards something. Um, and then uh, that would give time for that and time for us to start that. Process up to get them up to speed and onboard, um, cuz that will just take a little bit to to get them going. Uh, and then we could be moving forward on that. But yes, we could do that, it would just take this for directing their funds in that direction, you control your funds. So you can direct your funds, but you have to save in your budget documents, we have to do it right, you have dot that I across that T. So you could begin to move in that direction.
That goes back just, uh, the question we have as a board, do we wanna use our funds to guarantee a payment to start them now? Or do we wanna wait until the funds get processed through?
For clarity, that the amendment to the funding agreement is just going to add more money to the funding agreement, it's not. Uh, waiting for Marion County money to come in and pay for it, it all is just in, it's gonna be added to the pot of money you already have, so. There really isn't a, um, you know, NISSA agreeing to cover it for now, um. Uh, you're operating on a verbal that Marion County is gonna come through this additional eighty, but that's really not, it's. It's kind of not the perspective I would use to understand the use of your current funding plus this eighty thousand.
It's 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 a public budget process question, Brian, that's why Scott keeps looking at me like, well, uh. I'm trying to off the cuff remember their budget categories and whether there are, they are broad enough for them to allocate funds out of that. Or whether, I think they have to adopt a supplemental budget, because I don't think their budget categories are broad enough. For them to allocate out of their existing budget without a supplemental budget, but I will look. So like, it's not, I don't think they had a big broad brush like that said, public uh, public works, right? And the public works can do what it wants with its budget more or less, so, not more or less, sorry, that's, but I just have. I have to look and they they do have reserves, so they could allocate out of reserves, but then I just have to. I think they're gonna have to do a supplemental supplemental budget, but, um, those are just options, but and that's not me saying that that's Oregon public budget law, right? What what, how you can allocate it, it's, it's got, it's yours to allocate, but you might have to follow a process to do that, but I'll double check, yeah, to direct it, I'll double check it.
So we can start that process.
Essentially has something to say.
And so does Janet.
So Janet had her hand up there first, just give us a, Janet, what do you got?
Uh, having been involved with, um. The city for for what? Seven, six, seven years now, and having also been a a government employee, kind of, i- i- and I'm not questioning you at all, but. Um, stuff happens and and promises need to be moved around or changed, so I kind of am hesitant. To vote for it to come out during budget, just because unintentionally, whatever happens, money disappears. It's it's one of those looking through the the looking glass to see if you can see the truth or see the future if that money's really gonna come through. So that's all I wanted to say is I'm concerned about that, um. You know, we lost what, eighty-eight thousand or a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that was actually in the legislative budget? So.
Chris Epley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, in relation to the IGA that Marion County Community Services has with NISSA. Uh, the IGA is broad enough to allow you to use the hundred and fifty thousand that you already have pledged from us. For legal services, if you're, if you're using those legal services to move toward. Uh, developing, you know, the end product here, so. You don't have to wait for a an amendment to the IGA to use those funds. Um, so that takes away an external hurdle, all you have is your own internal budget hurdle and your policy decisions. Um, uh, as a group. Uh, as to whether or not to to move forward now or wait for the additional funding to come through with a formal amendment uh, in the future.
What we'll do is look at your budget and give you a risk analysis on that and just say, this is the things you would have to do from your internal point of view. Cuz what you're really trying to do at a minimum is direct. And direct towards an action, you know, and that is the attorneys coming forward, the ability to sign a contract, the ability to start to engage. So, that's what you're directing. That's what you wanna be able to direct, now you just wanna do it through the appropriate process. So we can give you just a risk analysis on what you're exposed to, which answers Janet's question. Now, you just want to do it through the appropriate process, so we can give you just a risk analysis on what you're exposed to, which answers Janet's question. In other words, here's the probability, here's my, you know, my exposure, and this is how we move along, but.
Is that something we're going to see at our next regular board meeting for voting on?
Yes.
That'll be something that we have on our.
Yeah, we'll put it together.
Voting and have the, our, our next regular meeting, which will be next Monday?
Yeah, I think what we could have ready is, um. The analysis of whether you could do it out of your existing budget without an amended budget process. And then you would just have to decide if you wanted to do that, um, to Janet's point about risks, so.
That's, that's.
That's next Monday. We need to move forward. That is next Monday.
So we have that on. Ken, I see you, is that a hand up you have in the bottom left-hand corner of your screen there? Do you have your hand up, Ken?
Uh, you don't see my hand.
Ah, okay.
No, gosh, don't do it.
Okay.
You don't see no fingers?
Let's go to the, the item B on our work session discussion, and that's the board rules about communicating with county staff, COG, and lawyers. We want to make sure that as board members, that we don't want to reach out too often with things, uh, wildcard questions. Stuff like that, that ties up our professionals' time and take them away from the time that they're spending on the projects and stuff like that. Other than myself, I like to have coffee with Brian once in a while, but he's off the clock and we're doing that. Right?
I, I, I think this is directed to our new board member. Um, and also just to identify that there's, I think. The chair and vice chair can contact the attorney. Uh, if you have any questions or you want something on the agenda, you're to contact. The chair or vice chair, they'll contact COG. Um, I think it's just. Some good advice on how you, you know, COG is going to charge us. They have every right to charge us when we contact them. So if you put your thoughts together, send them, send them to us, the chair, vice chair. We can contact COG. Uh, we'll still get billed, but we're not having two or three or four people contact them. Uh, at different times. The attorney, oh boy, don't contact the attorney. Please don't do that. Uh, we got lucky the last time. Nothing wrong, Ron, you had every, you had it. You had every great intention of, of, of handling something. Uh, we got lucky right there. Uh, he understands. Uh, he, he's, he's for us, he's with us. Um, so just trying to get everybody to understand that, uh, be cautious. Uh, I know we're all dedicated, we all have ideas, thoughts, beliefs. We want, we want to express them, but we have to take time. We have to be cautious on what we do.
However, I want to encourage everyone's enthusiasm and stuff like that and the extra efforts. Uh, put forth by some board members as well. This has been recognized as. As very valuable contributions to this whole thing. So, but like I say, we want to make sure we don't get stuck with uh extra costs. And we don't want to uh take up time from other folks that are, wouldn't be spending their time working on other uh aspects of the project. So. What else do we have? Laura, comments from staff?
Yeah, I, I, I did want to just add one last piece to your last conversation, just because I think it puts a bow on it. As a COG staff, we do a lot of, we'll do the, we do a lot of communication with county. Uh, especially when they need us, some, something for that. But we have either weekly or bi-weeklies with the chair and vice chair. So that way we, and so I encourage you to go through that, because then we collect it all then. We get it all answered then, dealt with then, and then uh it gets back onto your agenda, into the public light. Which is where it should be discussed, uh, back in front of board, questions answered, uh, and stuff done. So we do have an organized methodology that we use, uh, with the chair and the vice chair. Uh, to share information and make sure that agendas are properly done. And that, that administrative function of the board is, is completed for you folks. So just wanted to emphasize, uh, I think it's a great working relationship. We're glad to be able, but I know that. Like we haven't had any issue at all in those meetings, but I think we're able to get the agendas done and get those things addressed as you need, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I would just, I was going to say, as an example, um, this board has shared, uh, the concern with the rates that have been presented by the consultants. And of course, um, there's quite, there's quite a bit of rationale and methodology behind those that assists the, the process. And yet, there's a healthy tension between, um, the, the costs that have to be included. And the costs that our communities can bear. And so, uh, Chris I know is had offered to bring Keller in, um, at your November twentieth work session. To, um, explain, um, some of the O and M costs in more detail. So that the board members can, um, ask questions, fill holes. Um, we like to, we kind of joked, Ron and I joked earlier today. Um, why does it take two certificated individuals and some techs and brand new pickups? For, why isn't it, you know, one and two and some used pickups? And and then, and what's the rationale behind that? And I, I was explaining that that's the healthy tension between the engineering team that knows what has to be in place. Um, and the, this body, this public body that does what your communities can bear. And we need to have a really good shared understanding of that. And so because you as individual board members and in this, um, meeting, these meetings have shared those concerns. Um, the engineering team has been able to create time to put together a presentation with the content experts. Not off the cuff in a meeting, um, uh, but in a planned meeting to come back and talk with you about those. Um, so that's the type of efficiency that I think this conversation you just were having will promote. Is it'll ensure that all board members receive the information in a fully baked way. Um, the other thing I was going, so thank you to Chris I know and Dean for that. Um, and the other thing I was going to offer is that with our new board member, um, is an opportunity to create an orientation. Um, Ron and I were commiserating that we both came on about the same time and sort of oriented ourselves to this work. Um, with, with some help. And, um, there was, there would be an opportunity now with, with Emily to be here, to be, um. So to put something together that looks more like a board orientation, like what you would do for a city council member, um, who's coming on board. And so I will be working on that. Um, and if there are thoughts about what should be included, please let me know. She received a fabulous starting orientation, which is the open house at Gates. Um, I thought, God, you know, if we all had that orientation as our, that would have been fabulous. So, um, she has quite a bit so far, but there are just some of the other pieces, um, that we're going to develop. Because especially if Idana brings another board member on or other board members transition in and out. It will help this body be more efficient in its decision-making and its, um, understanding if we have a bit of a board orientation. So anybody that would like to help, um, or like to be involved with that, please reach out to me.
Uh, reach out to the chair and. Yeah, we just went through this.
So, Mr. Chair, I have one question. Um, the twentieth is the start of the Thanksgiving week. And I know people travel and go places. So I just want to kind of bring up to make sure we're going to have enough people here for a board meeting.
Everybody gonna be around on the twentieth of November? That is Thanksgiving week.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Danny?
Yeah.
Ken?
Okay, sounds, sounds like we won't have any problem getting to forum.
I just wanted to make a work session so that we don't need a call.
Uh, sure, good.
Yeah.
Uh, something else that I'd like to get on the agenda for the future is the PR program. Uh, it needs to be addressed. Yeah, it's part of Keller's contract. Um, we need to address it and, uh, but we don't need to discuss it right now. It's seven, it's seven oh two, but need to address it later on.
We could address it right now, Ken, if you'd like. It's, I have good news. That's why I'm willing to talk about it. Um, so Chris, I know, do you want to speak to them a little bit? I'll let you have your sayings then.
Yes, there we are. Uh, so yes, we are in the process of bringing on a firm to do exactly that. Um, as part of Keller, Keller's bringing them on as part of their firm as a dedicated, um. Public relations firm that has done public utility pro, projects in the past. So we're in the process of getting that on, added to the contract right now.
Thank you. It's needed. It's well needed.
And the principal of the contractor is named Matt Casey. And he and, um, he had, uh, attended the Mill City Open House and Janet actually spoke at length with him. Um, others may have as well. Uh, and so he, uh, came and was invested enough in the project, even though he doesn't have a contract yet to be here. Um, and to start to listen and learn to where the sensitivities of the communities are. Um, and start to help to answer what questions may be out there, what information needs to be provided. Um, did a long conversation with Janet about how we get that information to people, um, in these communities, what the vet forums are. It's not, you know, one size fits all. It's not just Facebook, and it's not just signs, it's not just flyers. So Janet was, um, instructive and I appreciated how he listens carefully to her advice. Did you want to say something more?
Well, no, he just, I, I gave him my card, I believe, with my phone number on it, and Paul, they can call me when you're. Ready to do stuff and we can set up, you know, I don't know Instagram and those type of things. But have access to post stuff on most of the canyon sites, so. Um, flyers, Laura offered to go door to door.
I actually will say that we just started a newsletter in Gates and that'll be sent out quarterly. But in the meantime, Don Mann grabbed a bunch from Chris of the flyers that he had at the open house event. Chris, did you ever get him? I think it was like three hundred he got or something.
Yeah, I just, I just want to know if Janet said, trust me.
I never once said, trust me.
Hey, that, then we're safe. Um, hey. How about KYEC? We can, we can look at everything. KYEC is a good one. So, uh, it's great that this is going to be addressed. Thank you.
So, did you get your?
No, I didn't have a question. I was, I saw him kind of like making a face. I just wanted to check in and make sure.
Oh, that's just normal with Ken.
Oh, did I make this?
Welcome aboard.
I did volunteer Scott and I to go for, uh, hang door to doors.
I'm happy to do hangers. I'm going to wear a Duke sweatshirt though.
All right.
Lauren and I go door to door to look in for, you know, whatever.
Once, once we have something to share, it's, we're, yeah, we'll definitely stop at your house and you know why.
Okay, so we're, we're wrapping it up a little bit early tonight, which is always good. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to, uh, speak to the good of the authority? If not, I apologize, but we do have another meeting next Monday night. We had to delay our midweek one, our mid-month one, our work session until tonight. Uh, because I was out of town. But the good news is, I did get my help. So we're all, uh, we're all good there.
That being real, getting a little.
We're all getting jerky this year, finally. Jerky for Christmas.
Anyway, uh, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's meeting. And I'll look forward to seeing you all again, uh, next minute. I guess we're too determined on location. We can have it here at Mill City City Hall again, as well as the, uh. The, the Zoom factor as well, so. I guess, unless somebody wants to offer up their own living room or something. We'll do it here in Mill City's living room. With that, we're going to call tonight's meeting a close. Thank you.
Thank you.